Good morning and welcome to the City of Chester Council Meeting for today, Wednesday, May 28th, 2025. As always, we open with prayer. Prayer today will be delivered by Reverend Malcolm Harris from Murphy Asbury African Methodist Episcopal Church of Chester, Pennsylvania. Following that, we'll have our pledge. All rise.
Good morning. As I begin this prayer, I want to start with a scripture that when my people humble themselves, the ones who are called by my name, pray and seek me and turn away from their evil practices, I myself will listen from heaven and I will pardon their sins and I will restore their land. Let us pray. Our Father and our God, we thank you for this morning. We thank you, Lord God, for giving us the health and strength to be able to get up, to get out, and to get here safely. Thank you for the safe travel. Now, Lord God, as we enter into this meeting, Lord God, we ask that the hearts and minds of the people will be all stayed on you and understanding and knowing that you are all-powerful in yourself, that you gave us the authority, Lord God, to have dominion over all things, all fish of the sea, all fowl of the air, and all beasts of the field. Well, Lord God, as we come, we ask that you bless our city, bless our council, bless all of those that will participate today. We ask this, and we ask all that know the word of God, that said, "Amen, amen, amen."
Thank you, Reverend Harris. Madam Clerk, let's do a roll call.
Counselors Gibson, present. Green?
Present.
Davis?
Present.
Mayor Roots?
Present. Council Lady West has an excused absence this morning. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from May 14th?
So moved. Second?
Any questions, comments, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, aye's have it. Motion carries. Thank you. Oh, it's our turn. Old business, new business, anything, counsel? Hearing none. There are no ordinances this morning. We just have one resolution. Oh, I did, didn't I? Thank you. Any public comments? On agenda items only.
Good morning. Just a question. Is that resolution that you're going to bring up, Resolution 68, is that available for public view?
Yeah.
And where can I get that?
Get your copy.
Okay, thank you.
Today.
Thank you, Ms. Amanda. Any others? Public comment only? Public comment on agenda items only. There we go. Madam Clerk?
Resolution, whereas under Title I of the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended, the Secretary of the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, known as HUD, is authorized to extend financial assistance to communities in the prevention or elimination of slums or urban blight, or carry out activities which will benefit low and moderate income persons, or other urgent community development needs. And whereas the consolidated submission for Community Planning and Development Program Regulations, known as 24 CFR 91, requires the preparation by the City of certain documentation as a prerequisite to access Community Development Block Grant and Home Investment Partnership Program Funds. And whereas, under the Home Program created by the National Affordable Housing Act of 1990 as amended, the Secretary of HUD is authorized to extend financial assistance to participating jurisdictions to expand the supply of decent, safe, sanitary, and affordable housing. And whereas, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development has advised the City of Chester that under fiscal year 2025, the City is eligible to apply for an entitlement grant under the Community Development Block Grant, known as CDVG Program, in the amount of $1,234,711. And the Home Investment Partnership Program, known as Home, in the amount of $335,392.07. And whereas, the City of Chester, in collaboration with the Chester Economic Development Authority, has prepared the 2025 through 2029 five-year consolidated plan and 2025 annual action plan, which proposes how the entitlement grant funds will be expended to address the housing and community development needs identified in the City's five-year consolidated plan. And whereas, a series of public meetings and an initial public hearing were held with the community at large, social service agencies, housing providers, community development agencies, and economic development groups prior to the development of drafts of the above referenced documents, which were on public display from March 3rd, 2025 through April 4th, 2025, during which time a public hearing on the draft documents was held. And whereas, the comments of various agencies, groups, and citizens were taken into consideration in the preparation of the final documents. Now, therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve Section 1, that the 2025 through 2029 five-year consolidated plan and the fiscal year 2025 annual action plan are hereby, in all respects, approved, and the City Clerk is hereby directed to file a copy of said documents with the official minutes of this meeting of this council. Section 2, that the funding allocation for 2025 projects, it projects, is attached hereto and made a part of this resolution. Section 3, that the City Council of the City of Chester is cognizant of the conditions that are imposed in the undertaking and carrying out of the Community Development Block Grant Program and Home Investment Partnership Program with federal financial assistance under Title I, including those related to, number one, the relocation of site occupants, two, the prohibition of discrimination because of race, color, age, religion, sex, disability, familial status, or national origin, and three, other assurances set forth under the certifications. Section 4, that the Mayor of the City of Chester, on behalf of the City Council, is authorized to file an application for financial assistance with the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, which has indicated its willingness to make available funds from the CDVG Program in the amount of $1,234,711, and the Home Investment Partnership Program in the amount of $335,392.07, to carry out the programs identified in the fiscal year 2025 annual action plan. Section 5, that the Mayor, on behalf of the City of Chester, Pennsylvania, is authorized to provide assurances and or certifications as required by the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974 as amended, and any other supplemental or revised data which the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development may request in review of the City's application.
So moved. Second.
Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Gibson Wams?
Yes.
Green?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Mayor Roots?
Yes. And that's it? That's official city business for today. But we're not finished. You have any reports, Chief? Any directors, anything to report? We've got a few presentations. We're going to start with Life Saving Award, VMSC. The stage is yours.
Thank you, Mayor.
Go to that microphone and speak loudly.
Absolutely.
All right. I'd like to ask paramedics Somp, Torres, and Fire Commissioner, Fire Commissioner, and firefighter Hatton, is he here? Or is any of your firefighters here? Okay. You're accepting on behalf? Okay, great. I'd like to read the citation and present the award. Give us your name first. Shane Wheeler, Chief of VMSC Emergency Medical Services. This is the Life Saving Award presented to paramedic David Somp, paramedic Nicholas Torres, firefighters John Albany, firefighter Lisandra Capo Bernath, firefighter Paul Curry, and firefighter Matthew Hatton on May 28th, 2025, I'm sorry, on this day, May 28th, 2025. Incident happened on May 15th at 9:30 in the evening here in the City of Chester. In recognition of extraordinary dedication, clinical excellence, and swift life-saving actions demonstrated during the resuscitation of a one-year-old pediatric patient in cardiac arrest, upon arrival, the patient was found unresponsive with agonal respirations and no pulses. Through decisive leadership, effective airway management, pediatric resuscitation, and coordinated transport, the EMS team achieved return of spontaneous circulation, ROSC, prior to the arrival at Nemours Children's Hospital. The patient was successfully stabilized and ultimately discharged from the hospital without neurological deficit. Your actions exemplify the highest standards of emergency medical care and reflect great credit upon yourselves, VMSC, the Chester Fire Bureau, and the entire EMS profession. I'd like for you two to come forward. Stand up here in front. Mayor, would you like to come down and help me present the award? Fire Commissioner? Sure, yeah. These are the citation bars. All right. Paramedic Nicholas Torres, a brand-new paramedic, right? Great way to start his career as a paramedic in the community. Congratulations. Here's your, here's your award, and the mayor has your citation bar. I'll take that. Oh, sticky. Go ahead. Or you can add it to him, whichever you feel is necessary.
Yeah, here, I'll hand it to you.
There you go. All right. And paramedic PHRN, Pre-Hospital Registered Nurse, David Somp. Congratulations on your efforts. And accepting on behalf of the Fire Department Commissioner Shirley. Thank you. We absolutely want to hear from our heroes.
Oh, boy. Not much of a public speaker, but I'll just say on behalf of VMSC that we're happy to be down here helping the community. I know it's kind of unprecedented times with Crozier closing, and we're just fortunate to have been able to take over and provide the community with solid, sound emergency medical services. So it's my pleasure to be here and help you guys.
Thank you.
All right, we'll pause for a minute. I'm pretty sure the media's going to want to get out of here and take their microphones and cameras and tripods.
Thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
Thank you, Mayor.
Obviously, we're all still adjusting to the closing of Crozier Hospital. One of the first things that we delivered is ambulance service for the City of Chester, and these guys and gals are, gosh, I don't want to say overperforming, because they'll just say they're doing their job. But they're here, they're stationed at the fire station 82, right there on 14th and Edgemont Providence. How's the accommodations? Okay, they're good. What is it, this past weekend, Saturday, you guys were out in Chester Park for five hours. They set up a tent, sort of an information session for the community to get to know them. They were teaching some first aid and stop the bleed, and they had the, I say models, you guys say dummies, but the people on the table that you could do the chest compressions, learning how to do that. So they're constantly in the community, and look at them, saving one-year-olds. Really appreciate you. We have another presentation. This one's going to be delivered by Justin Tibbles. It's the Chester City Connect app. We talked about it earlier this year. It is ready for you to download. Justin will give you some details as to what this app is all about, what it's going to be used for, the state that it's in right now, what's to come, and how to download it. What did I miss, Justin?
All right, hopefully this will work. Great. All right. Good morning, Mayor, Council, and members of the public. I briefly put up the QR code to be able to download Chester City Connect, the City of Chester's new mobile app that's available right now for free in your mobile phone app store, whether you're on iPhone or Android. We'll put that back up later so that you guys can download it for yourselves and fiddle around with it. We'll also have some cards that I'll put out on the table after this that you can take with you to do the QR code and to share with your neighbors and things like that as well. Sorry, I lost the broadcast. So I'm just going to do this literally on my phone right here. But we're so excited to launch this new app, Chester City Connect. And as implied by its name, Chester City Connect is a tool to help you, as the Chester residents, to better connect with your city government and to stay informed with what's going on around the city. So I'm going to click on it right there and pull it up. One of the things that I'm most excited about with the new mobile app, Chester City Connect, is that we have the ability to send push notifications to your phone, just like any app that you have on your phone now. And so we've already been, you know, sending some out before officially releasing it. But this is really exciting, because this means that the City can send important, timely updates directly to you on your phone. Right now, we've been doing our best as city government to try to get information out through different means, through a website, through social media, flyers, word of mouth. And that's great, but often that's kind of hit or miss. You may or may not see the information that's being put out there or hear things through those channels. What's great with the push notifications in this app is that every user will get every alert every time directly to your phone. So this will greatly improve dissemination of information from here at City Hall out across Chester. Now, you may be thinking, I don't want to get too many notifications on my phone, or I only want to get notifications about certain topics. So you don't have to create an account on this. You can just download it and start using the app immediately. But if you want to be able to customize the kinds of notifications that you receive, you can create quickly a, an account. And so you can click on this little hamburger, it's called, in the top-left corner to pull up the sidebar menu, and there will be an option to create an account. Now, I've already done that. You basically just enter your name and an email address and create an account. From there, you can go into your notifications. You can see all the notifications that have been sent out recently. And if you click in the top right, you can pull up Settings. And if you click on Settings, you can just toggle on or off any of the categories of notifications that you'd like to receive, which you can change at any time. So you can see some of the things that we're hoping to communicate using this app, things like city government. For instance, there's a council meeting today, or there's going to be a town hall or something like that. Community events that are happening, the things that are on the flyers that you guys just picked up. You can get alerts about those, reminders, things related to health and environment, holidays and history, jobs and training, road and weather alerts, trash and recycling, and probably more than that as well. So again, you can customize that yourself. Now, in addition to push notifications coming directly to your phone, you can just access information within the app. There are many relevant tabs to access information and resources. For instance, near the top here, there's an events calendar. So you can click on the calendar, pull that up, and it'll show a calendar of different events that are happening across the city. Bless you. So for instance, tomorrow night, there is a Safe Summer Fair. You can click that, see the flyer, get the details of when, where, and what is happening. For instance, there's also on Friday, Hometown Hero Banner Program unveiling. Can see that in the calendar. So that's accessible to you anytime, in addition to all the other kinds of events that are happening across the city in the categories that I already said. Another thing that I do want to highlight is at the top, you can see it says, "Coming Soon Citizen Requests." So we are still building a citizen request system, which we hope to launch in the app by the fall. And when we do launch that, what that'll give you, the ability to do, is within the app, you see, you know, some issue that you want to report to the city, illegal dumping, a pothole, you know, some debris or something like that, an abandoned vehicle. You'll be able to pull up your phone and immediately just fill out a little request form to send that to the proper people here in City Hall. It'll generate a ticket for you, and then you'll be able to track the progress with the, the request that you have submitted. So we're still working on that. That's going to be coming by the fall. But we didn't want to wait to launch the app, because everything else is ready. The summer's always a busy time, and so we wanted you guys, as Chester residents, to be able to get notifications and alerts about everything that's happening across the city this summer. So you can download Chester City Connect and explore it for yourself. Share it with your neighbors, get them to download it as well. We'll continue to update this and change it. I'm sure, you know, we just launched it. We'll probably refine things and, and make it better and add stuff to it. So keep checking back, and feel free to share your feedback with us so that we can make it better. I do want to give a special thank you to the Delaware County Interactive Gaming Revenue Authority and Delaware County Council for providing the funding for this. Thank you to GOGOV for the development of this app, and of course, to Mayor and Council for approving the development of this app. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions about Chester City Connect.
I have a question. Great job on your presentation on the mobile app, Justin.
Thank you.
We appreciate you. My question is, for the people who are not here, will this information be on our city website so that they know how to navigate through the?
Yes. So immediately following this meeting, we'll start to put out the, the link to download the app, and we'll get that out along with some basic, you know, instructions and explanations about how the app works. And we also, again, have little, like, basically business cards that we can hand out to people so that they can get the link and download it, as well as we'll have posters and other things like that. So we're going to try to start getting the word out from right here, right now, about the app and, and helping people know how to use it.
So the QR code will be on that card that you're going to give?
Yes. And you don't actually need the QR code. I mean, if you go into your app store and just search Chester City Connect, it should just show up. But the QR code will take you right to it in your app store. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah? Yes, ma'am? Who's monitoring the app? So right now, the app is being run by us here at City Hall, primarily myself and our communication specialist, Adrian Irving, are kind of managing the content. Like I said, right now, there's not a citizen request management feature. That'll get added in in a couple months. Once that gets added in, we'll, we'll basically be overseeing it from the top down. But what'll be nice about the citizen request management is that your issue, depending on what your issue is, will go directly to the correct person and kind of generate a ticket and get tracked that way. So we'll, department heads, they'll be able to track, you know, are there, are their employees kind of addressing the issues that are being sent to them within that system. But that's not a feature yet. Yeah. So once we do launch the citizen request management feature, you'll have a ticket. You'll be able to see when you submitted it. You'll be able to see the progress, like when things happened on your issue and if it's resolved. And we'll be able to, as collectively as City Hall, track how we're doing in resolving issues that are sent to us within City Hall. So it'll be great for tracking data. Yeah.
Justin?
Yes, ma'am.
Quick question. So all of the departments will get an email or an alert of the ticket that has come in from our constituents, right? But will there be a training on how to use this system for, for the staff?
Yes, ma'am. So we're going to be using the tracer system for the citizen request management feature, which they've already been developing internally for use, especially with LNI zoning and planning. And so they're, they're developing all this together. And once it's ready, there'll be training internally for all staff how to use it, you know, both for the internal uses, as well as for the citizen request management features. But it's kind of like, it'll be a whole software that we'll be trained on to use. But again, we're, we're months away from that particular feature. I just wanted to say that that functionality is going to be added in, which will just make this app even better. But for now, this app's going to be great for notifications and accessing information right on your phone.
Thanks.
Great job, Justin. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Excellent presentation. I'm just curious, is there anybody, show of hands, is there anybody who will not download this app? We got one. That's great. That's what we want. Two people. That's great. Out of about 50, that's, that's wonderful, because we want everybody in the city to have this app. This does resolve one- not knowing how, how to accomplish it in a timely manner and affordably. It was my trip down to the U.S. Conference of Mayors event in Washington, D.C., in the third week of January, right before the inauguration, in fact. They have a huge exhibit hall. I try to see as many as I can. As soon as I walked in the door, there were three different vendors who provide this particular service, brought the information back to Justin. He sorted out which one would work best with our software, with our staff, with our community, which one was affordable. It was January, mind you, after budget had already been decided, so we kind of knew we couldn't afford it. It was something we were looking to do for next year. But thank you for giving credit to the Delaware County Interactive Gaming Revenue Authority, who we requested grant from, and they, they honored the grant in the full. So at least this first year is covered, so we can develop it. There will still be some, some further costs, just it's a subscription service with the GoGov, nowhere near as much as it, is it costs to initially get it onboard. So, great, great job, great presentation. You can download it now.
Okay, ma.
All right. Yeah, but what he said, what it does now, it does push, sends you notifications. By default, all those categories are selected. You will get notifications. And it's, it's really designed right now to get you to items on our website, sometimes very hard to find. So as you're clicking those categories, the data is literally coming from the city's, the city's website. Just a much easier way to interact with the website and ultimately to interact with the departments for the issues that you have. That's it for presentations. I do have a few things to share that's coming up this week, but before I do, we have a community-related situation that I just want to share, and thank you for creating my talking points, because I could talk forever on some of this stuff, but I'm gonna try to stick, stick to the script here. And this is regarding the shooting this past weekend. It pains me to have to address this, but it's necessary, that on Friday, May 23rd, at approximately 11:00 p.m., Chester Police responded to reports of gunfire here in the city of Chester and observed two individuals fleeing on foot, and they heard a lot of shouting. Sadly, a 16-year-old male succumbed to his injuries, and three more victims aged 26, 16 and 25 were found with gunshot injuries, and a fifth victim aged 21 was found outside with a grazed wound. This senseless violence is a tragic reminder of the urgent need to protect our neighbors and our youth. City of Chester is committed to supporting law enforcement and bringing those responsible to justice and investing in lasting solutions for peace. The Chester Police Department urges anyone with information to come forward and contact the Chester Police Department and/or the county detectives. As summer approaches, we recognize the increased urgency to strengthen our violence prevention efforts because we know the uptick is usually during the warm weather months. This season, more than ever, we're focused on ensuring the safety and well-being of our young people and the entire Chester community. Unfortunately, the City of Chester has seen a rise in criminal activity involving juveniles, both as victims and as offenders. In response, we're implementing several proactive initiatives designed to create safer places and spaces, encourage positive engagement, and support our youth. One of the first ones is a collaborative community safety efforts. We're working with the police department and community-based organizations to develop and then implement strategies that safeguard our youth, our family, and our residents. One key partner in this work is the nonprofit in Chester called Making a Change Group. They provide vital support to at-risk youth between the ages of 10 and 21. They have targeted intervention and mentorship. Their Next Chat program, serving young men between the ages of 18 and 24 with job training and life readiness support, has already made a positive impact. Two of their recent graduates were recently hired by the city's Parks Department. This is a clear example of how investment in our young people pays off for the entire community. Secondly, summer curfew enforcement. To help prevent late-night incidents and keep our youth safe, the city's curfew, which is always on the books, but will be strictly enforced from June 1st through August 31st. During this period, minors under the age of 18 are not permitted in public places. Public places means the streets as well. Or establishments between 9:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m., unless accompanied by a parent or guardian. Exceptions include travel to or from a school-sanctioned event, a religious activity, or place of employment. We urge, 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 urge parents and guardians to support this initiative. It's about keeping our young people safe. It is not a punitive action. We see a kid walking down the street at 9:15 p.m. We clearly don't expect a police officer with lights and sirens to pull a kid over and throw him in the car. But if you, as a resident, see activity that appears to be from young people under the age of 18 or somewhere around there, gathered in places they shouldn't belong, or just plain old making you scared, we are gonna answer that call and come out and respond in kind. Safe Summer Fair is coming up this Thursday. If today's Wednesday, that means tomorrow. We're excited to host our Safe Summer Fair tomorrow, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. right here in our community room. Chester youth and families are encouraged to attend and explore a wide range of free and low-cost summer programs and activities. With over 20 vendors, there's gonna be games, giveaways, and treats. This fair is a fantastic opportunity to plan fun, safe, enriching summer for our children. We started this last year. We had a Safe Summer Summit as a result of violence that was occurring early in the summer season, because oftentimes, when there is violence, particularly toward young people, we hear, "There's nothing for the children to do." Well, 80, 81 people showed up at that Safe Summer Summit, and many of the organizations that provide fun, enriching, educational activities were present. And they talked to each other. We tried to identify, you know, new organizations to do that type of work. We're not gonna repeat that this year. This year, it's gonna be more for you, you parents, aunts, uncles, grandparents, who want to enroll your children in activities. Tomorrow will be the day to do it. Each vendor will have a table representing themselves and how to enroll individuals in their programs. Last year, we had this summit on Juneteenth. It's June 19th. One of the things we found was, at June 19th, the organizations that showed up last year, many of them were already filled to capacity. So we're doing this a little earlier this year, and we were, you know, assured that many of the groups that are showing up will have capacity for your children to enjoy summer activities. So please come, share the word, and sign up. I want to give a special thanks to our new Parks and Recreation, I forget titles, I'm sorry, but Crystal Burrell. She's, she's putting this all together. She's a great organizer and really proud that she's onboard. There's gonna be youth programs and activities, and we understand the importance of offering engaging, positive activities to keep our youth active and inspired over the summer. Here's a couple. Some people take it for granted, but we have a pool. So the Memorial Park Swimming Pool, our Parks and Rec Department has been hard at work preparing Memorial Park and its pool to welcome families for the summer season. We're thrilled to announce that the pool will be opening soon. That's what's written. I'm gonna tell you what's, what's, what's the facts. The pool is open. It's just not open for you yet. But we, Memorial Day is always the goal. The pool was ready to be open on Memorial Day. We just knew it was, nobody was gonna go. It was too cold. It was too chilly. This weekend's probably too chilly as well. But thanks to the Parks Department, who really know what to do to get this pool open. We, we have invested pretty heavily in the pool in the last three years, well over $300,000. Now, it's almost like pushing a button, turning a crank, and the pool is ready. If you noticed, over the winter, you saw a new cover on the pool. That's part of the investment. So the pool is completely covered. Everything's ready to go. So we're excited about the pool being ready. It's just a matter of us flipping the switch and opening the gate and getting you guys in there. Last summer, we also partnered with the Philadelphia Union. There's the Philadelphia Union Soccer Team, and then there's their, they call it the Philadelphia Union Two. Come on, Tom, you're a real soccer fan. What, what would you consider that, like a minor league squad, or like a G League, or?
Let's say it's a minor.
Development team.
It's the minor league development team.
It's the development team, yeah. These guys are good. But they also play at the stadium. So thanks to our partnership with the Philadelphia Union, Chester families can enjoy four games at no cost on June 26th, July 6th, July 12th, and August 3rd. It's not an either-or. You can go to all four. You can go to three. You can go to two. You can go to one. Families can request up to five tickets per game through the Chester City Connect app. I think we heard about that earlier. Or by contacting the mayor's office at publicaffairs@chestercity.com. The games are a chance for our young people to experience professional sports and be inspired, all while having fun in a safe and supportive environment. And in closing, I want the people of Chester to know this. We see what's happening out here in these streets, and we care deeply. And we're taking action. These initiatives are not just about summer. They're part of our long-term commitment to building a safer, stronger Chester all year round. By working together, we can create a city where our youth can thrive and every resident feels safe and supported. Up next, we've got a whole list of things to talk about today.
Well, I have a question.
Okay.
While the children are, are our greatest concern right now, how is this curfew going to be enforced? What is that gonna look like? You said 9:15, the officer would not just come and put the kid in the car and take him to the station, but what does that look like? How, how do we keep our parents accountable for their children being out past the curfew? What are the consequences? Because we're trying to keep them alive, you know? We're trying to keep them safe. And we can say, yes, let's have a curfew, but how is it gonna be enforced is my concern.
Well, let's bring our commissioner up. Commissioner Katrina Blackwell.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Um, Councilwoman, the citation, it would be tracked by citations. And before they go to a judge, the idea is not to punish the parent or be punitive, but the idea is to make them accountable, like you said. They have to be in the house. If they're in the house, half the stuff that's happening in the street is not happening. So the accountability will come in between the citation being written by the officer and how the courts address it.
And so when these officers see the children?
Mm-hmm.
And make contact with them, what, what is that gonna look like?
Um, they can find out where they live. You can either do it one or two ways, like taking the kid to the, to the parent or the guardian, or having the parent or guardian come to the police department. That will just basically depend on manpower and, you know, our cause of service at that time.
And will the children be treated with respect, or will they be harassed, or?
Well, see, that.
Talk negatively on?
See, that, that, that's part of the problem. Nobody wants anybody saying nothing to their kids. The police are never, there's never an excuse for disrespect or talking down or talking nasty. But if any of you have ever been to the Chester High Letout, that's talking nasty. That's, that's them kids giving it back to us, giving it to us. So the idea is not to, is to build bridges, not to burn any down. And accountability, the community is saying they want accountability. This is what accountability looks like, and it starts at home.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Yep.
Do you guys still have the paddy wagon? I remember when I was younger, I got picked up by the paddy wagon a few times.
Yeah, we, we still do have the.
Okay. So will you guys be picking kids up in a van?
Yes. I mean, if that's what it warrants.
Okay.
If that's what it warrants, if we see an area specifically that has an abundance of kids hanging out, let's just say 21st Street or something like that, if it makes sense to go up there and address it while one of the officers operates the van, that's what we'll do, as opposed to bringing two and three kids and just put them all in the van. I hope everybody's listening to this. This is what this looks like.
Yeah.
This is what this looks like. So everybody be aware of what we're doing this summer, like the mayor said, going forward. So remember that your children have to be in the house. I don't want to hear that they're with their older cousin, or, you know, they're just saying, "Oh, this is my uncle." This is, we're not here for the semantics. Just make sure everybody knows that this is what's happening.
Thank you.
Yep.
Kind of goes back to a saying that I share, you know, people want change, but do they want to change? Hometown Heroes Banner. This is exciting for, for Chester overall. We ride through all these communities, and we see these banners hanging from the trees and from the light poles, and we haven't had any in the city of Chester. I used to tell this bad joke when people would ask me, "Why doesn't Chester have Hometown Hero banners?" And I'd say, "Because we don't have any veterans." And then I'd duck a punch or a kick, because we know that's not true. We all have family members. Some of us may have been in the military. But it was always just to get people kind of riled up and say, you know, "We need you to be advocating for this as well." On council, I put a whole program together to roll out a Hometown Hero banner, and I'm really happy that when Councilman Davis came onboard, he had the same mission, like, "We, we gotta get some Hometown Hero banners." And I was like, "Oh, great. I can give this file to him, and we can get this thing rolling." So to the, thanks to the work of Councilman Davis and bringing it back to the top of the heap, to all of council, to, to Justin, who helped quite a bit. I think State Rep Kazim has gotten involved as well. The Public Works Department is definitely involved. We have gotten to the point where there are banners going up today, I believe. Yeah, they're going up to, we can't do an unveiling. It's not like a street sign where you take the curtain off. Takes a little while to get these banners up. We have announced it over the past couple months. Not everybody saw the announcement, but no one's gonna miss the banners. And when the banners are gonna go up, we're gonna get a flood of requests, and we're ready, willing, and able to execute on all requests. There is a cost involved, but even if you can't afford a banner, we want you to apply. We want you to send your, your loved one's photo, their bio, because we have a spot on our website where they can sit with all the other veterans, even if they're not on a pole out here. Mr. Tibbles, do we have anything to show?
You want to show the, the banners? Or what do you want me to show?
Show the banners, show the website. Let's just show what we have to show.
Okay.
But the unveiling will be on Friday at 10:00 a.m. Let's see how well people know the geography of Chester. 12th Street between Edgemont and Providence. I'm seeing a few, few heads nod. Madison Grill. Yeah, everybody knows where the Madison Grill is. Not that you go there, but that little street that's between Madison and, and Edgemont, right up against I-95, you may not have noticed, but there's a huge sidewalk there with four poles that can support two banners per pole. That's a very noticeable location. So we're gonna have eight banners going up there, and then another seven nearby. I'm not even sure where the other seven are gonna go, but they're all gonna be up on Friday. And on Friday at 10 o'clock, there'll be a celebration. there'll be a celebration. Should be no more than a half hour, 35 minutes. But we're gonna have a lot of hometown people there. Joe Kane will be bringing his trumpet. I think, uh, where is she? She's, she's gone. But our chaplain is doing a prayer. I think a drum team from Chester High is scheduled to, to perform. I, I forget the rest. But you have a microphone over there?
Yes, sir.
Show us, show them what we're looking at.
Sure. So this isn't exactly what the banners are gonna look like, but, you know, that's the idea, that there will be these Hometown Hero banners, like the mayor mentioned. And these will be going up around 12th and Edgemont for the ceremony on Friday. And like the mayor was mentioning, we're also going to try to set up sort of an online digital veterans hall. So whether or not you get a banner, if you would like, you could send us a photo and information, you know, bio of your veteran. And we'll be adding those to the website and you'll be able to sort by different ways, like by branch of the military, by the maybe year or conflict that they were involved with, things like that, and look through all the veterans. And that's free. So you can see all this at chestercity.com/veterans. And we also added a Veterans tab to the app. So you can just go into Chester City Connect app and click on Veterans and you'll be able to browse through all that as well. So we're still building this, but as things are sent to us, we'll be able to build it out and fill it in more and more.
Can you show the application? Or submission? There you go. So what you see there, kinda the ground rules for submitting your nominee. Well, your, it's not a selection process. Eligibility. Oh, I can see it from here. What you need to submit: banner application, release form, high-quality photo, military verification form. Application deadline, which only applied to this release now. I don't think we'll, we'll probably remove deadline because we'll constantly be taking submissions. That is the form. It's pretty simple. I think it's just two pages. I lied, it's three. Yeah, so this is, this is our time to shine, Chester. This is our time to shine. These banners will be up year-round. We're identifying locations in Chester when the onslaught of, of new applications come. We're gonna put these banners. And I'd like for the councilman to add any comments that you have, because you've been working, working hard on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So in regards to the onslaught of new applications, that's already started. I've gotten more than 25 emails from residents communicating to me that they would like their family members to be involved. So that's really exciting to see. The goal of this program, the reason why I'm so happy that the mayor, council, and the rest of City Hall and the rest of the community has gotten behind us with this program is because, you know, it's a long time coming. I am the grandson of a military veteran and I respect our veterans. I respect our heroes in general for fighting for our freedoms and our liberties. And it's something that I'm happy to, you know, help put my name on. But to see the community and council and everyone really get behind this is what really touches my heart. And the goal is to see something like this program kinda trickle down and to spiral into other things. Hopefully, we can see these banners in our community and take them up with pride, as well as keeping up our community and keeping our community clean. You know, making sure that we don't have litter, trash, no graffiti. Things like that can help spiral and affect the community in a positive way from just a simple program like this. And that's really the goal, that, you know, some of these bigger, larger things that we can come together and collaborate on, you know, can help trickle down and then, you know, segue into other positive influences in our community. And that's really the goal here and I'm excited to see that's happening. And I'm just really excited to see all the families come out this Friday and celebrate with us. This will be ongoing, God willing, for many, many years to come. And I hope that it continues to grow and it continues to thrive and we can come together as a community and as a people and really support one another in a positive manner. Because, you know, I know, I know firsthand that Chester has that capacity and that's what I'm looking for. That's what we're all reaching for and striving for. And I'm really excited, everyone. So thank you so much. And I know I've been quiet. I'm just genuinely a quiet person when it comes to stuff like this because it's not a one-man show. Like, like the mayor said, Justin, the directors of departments, everyone has been working hard on this program. So I am in no way, shape, or fashion gonna take credit for this, but I really would like to see everyone really, you know, come together and stay encouraged with programs like this. Because Chester, we have a lot to offer and a lot, a lot of positive things to offer. And it, you know, it's easier said than done. But when we come together, we can actually get some things done. And this program is, I guess, a small step in that direction. So I just wanna say thank you to everyone for continuing support. Myself, mayor, and council, as well as our community when it comes to, you know, spreading some positivity and love and encouragement here. So thank you.
I forgot to mention, I think it's kind of important to mention, although it might seem minor. Like, these are banners that require getting them up on a pole. So how would you imagine that's done? A ladder?
A truck crane.
A fire truck? What did you say?
A truck crane.
A truck crane. Truck crane, yeah.
And that's a bucket.
A bucket truck. There you go. That's what he's talking about. We don't, we don't, we don't have a bucket truck in our, in our fleet.
You do have one on hand. You bet.
I will say that thanks to Mr. Receiver over here, he has signed off and we have ordered a bucket truck, but it won't be here nearly in time. But one of our local utility companies is letting us, well, they're, we're gonna be using, their bucket truck will be used to put the banners up. So it's great to have partners right here, business partners right here in the city. They go by the name of Del Cora. I think they're out today. Is that right, Mark? Do you know? They're out today, Tom?
They put the bucket for me and not something.
Uh, we're talking Chester. Talking Chester. So I just wanna let you know that, uh, you know, some things we can't do on our own.
I do have a question for some of the seniors in here. You might can teach me a history lesson. I was just reading on the page and it said that the guy was born or raised in Flower Hill Housing Project. Where was that located at in Chester? Oh, so is that Flower Hill or Flower Manor? Originally Flower Hill? And then went to Flower Manor?
12th and 8th.
12th. Yarno.
See what happens when you? I did, I did text the guy who submitted that if Flower Hill was, uh, was the right name. Because we, we, we know it, us young people, is Flower Manor. But he, he might be more right than, than us. Something happened yes, uh, Sunday? The Old Swede Cemetery, was that Sunday? Sunday. You know, oftentimes, I'm asked to give remarks, open a session or, or whatever. So I was invited across the street, across the street behind us. There's a cemetery back there. And over the last couple years, the cemetery has gotten a lot of interest. Correct me if I'm wrong, Justin. Maybe up to $200,000 has been? Not sure. Yeah. But the Daughters of the American Revolution and other organizations are really invested in the Old Swede Cemetery that sits right behind us. There are individuals buried in that cemetery that go back to the six, late 1600s. The most recognized person buried there is John Morton. He was the last signer of the Declaration of Independence and it was his signature that gave the United States the majority to go independent. You could read his history there. They've been doing some work over there. I, I really challenge you, not challenge you, but I invite you to go over there and just see the work. The grass is cut. The tombstones have been lifted. They've done the ultrasound stuff to see what's underground. It's amazing history. The brick wall that has been falling down for years, it, it didn't help that a car jumped the curb and, and ran through the wall. So the wall is being repaired as we speak. But yesterday, they, they had a celeb, or Sunday, they had a celebration. It was a sign that they planted. There's an article in the Daily Times that gives more details, but mu- much of which I forget. But what I can't forget is that there were well over 100 people there. And I didn't expect that. And they were really celebrating America's history right here in Chester. What I also didn't expect was descendants of John Morton, his family members showed up from across the country. There were people there from California, Arizona, New Mexico. I'm just trying to think of the furthest places. You remember any of the others? But, I mean, they were, they flew in from all over the country. It was a magnificent event. In, in some of the speeches, one of the things that they did stress, and it's something that this, this, me as mayor and council are really pushing in this city, is to make Chester a tourist destination. And they mentioned that many times, how tourism does help, you know, with people paying attention to your town, spending money in your town, and just recognizing your town for what it is. So Chester's history goes back all the way to the 16, well, Chester first city in America. I mean, it's the first city in Pennsylvania, so we obviously go back a long ways. But one of the last remaining visible, tangible relics of those times is right across 291 at the Old Swede Cemetery. I invite you to go over there and just take a look. It's open. Doesn't cost you anything. There have been some improvements over the last couple years. And we're just really proud to be a part of that history, even though we might not recognize it or appreciate it. It's really great to know that people who really love American history saw some value in that. Go ahead.
Aside from Swede Cemetery, the Black Spur.
That's not true. But go ahead.
Okay, also at 22nd or 23rd Street, the Quaker Cemetery, you have a couple of black soldiers that entered the war that Washington and the people lived in the old Swede Cemetery. They were very, very young players. The Quakers were very, very young. So it's a, um, it's a memorial fact.
All right, well, now, now we know. And then, you know, there's the Green Lawn Cemetery out in Chester Township that has a lot of history as well. But just wanted you to know. And I, I encourage you to go back and read the full article. It was a pretty thorough article on the Old Swede Cemetery. And there are blacks buried there.
Do they have a list of their names? I'm interested in seeing the names of the individuals.
So what she's asking, is there a list of names of all the people that are buried in the cemetery? The answer is probably not. But that property, the Old Swede Cemetery, has a complicated deed between the city of Chester and St. Paul's Church, which is up on 9th and Madison. And the folks up at 9th and Madison were painstakingly writing down the people that they knew were in the cemetery. If you know anything about St. Paul's Church, its congregation has about 15 members and many of them are 85 years and older. So they just couldn't continue that work. But the work of the Daughters of the American Revolution, I can point you to them because they have been taking an inventory as best as they can. They were dusting off the tombstones, finding as best as they could what was engraved on there. And, and that's how we know there are, there are, there are black residents buried there. For a couple reasons, this area was sort of the black section of town in the early days of Chester. There were churches here with the widening of roads and with the purchase of, of property that were formerly places where black folks were buried. They all, many of them got moved into that cemetery. They are sure, though, that none of the black people that are buried in the cemetery have headstones. But it's amazing. I think they said, uh, when they did the ultrasound, there's over 300 that they could see, bodies buried in that, in that cemetery right across the street. But it will be recognized mainly for John Morton, who grew up in Ridley Town, Ridley Park. Grew up in Ridley Park. So why he's buried here, I'm not sure, but he is. Let's take this opportunity for council to share anything that you guys wanna share before we go to public comment.
I think we said enough.
All right. We have one agenda item. We're still here, right? All right, Olivia Smith.
Hello. Just wanted to follow up on something. What's the status of the Chester Park Barn in the Sun Village? I know they were on your ARPA list and has that project ever been, been started? Excuse me.
Yes, for two things. Sun Village overall?
No, Sun Village, that park, that barn area or utility shed or wherever you wanna call it.
Where they used to vote at?
The voting site, yes.
Oh, the garage.
Okay, it's the garage. I'm gonna put that as, that was called the garage.
Yeah, let me get an answer for you. Tom, you're probably more on top of that.
Yeah, that, that building is under design by our engineer, so we're hoping to put that out for bid.
Stop the clock now, he's talking. Stop the clock, okay.
We're, we're hoping to put that out for bid before the end of this year.
This year?
Yes, ma'am.
Is that this year? Okay, thank you. Now, on your Resolution 68 that you were saying, who developed that, um, resolution? Was that internal? Was that from our Internal Department of Economic Development?
Mr. Solicitor.
Uh, yes, that was developed internally.
He said yes.
You said yes, it was our internal part. Our internal economic development, excuse me, authority developed that. Wasn't nobody external?
Along with the Solicitor's Office, correct.
Okay, but nobody external, you didn't have any, uh, other, other folks. Okay, I'll just put a period on that. Now, in that plan, will there housing be built in that? Is there any housing? I, 'cause I didn't see the plan. Just a yes or none. I will look at it and see.
I'm not aware of the actual details of the plan. I don't know if someone from the departments here.
Uh, there will be, um, I believe, a hundred thousand dollars. There would be money allocated for silver care, which, uh, they're doing a adult, or a senior living facility, uh, down on Ninth Street.
Okay.
Do you have the numbers?
No, you don't have to give me, no, no. There's a document.
Yeah, so there, there's, uh, a hundred thousand dollars for Single Family Affordable Housing Initiative, a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, and then a hundred thousand dollars for Silver Care Senior Housing Phase Two.
Okay, I, I know that can't be for building, that's probably for planning.
Conversion.
You can build nothing for a hundred and thirty-some thousand dollars to have a whole lot of people live in. Okay. Now, I really, what I came up with, just to uplift, 'cause I saw it in the, in the flyers, you know, Juneteenth is coming, and I just want everybody to know that Juneteenth will be here, or at June twenty-first at, excuse me, Memorial Park. This is a partnership from the Ray of Hope CDC and the City of Chester, and we have all homegrown talent this year. We have C R M C and O G Hattie, we have Kim Pendergardner, Jawan Bows, the Raising Cane Band, and Tyra Starr. So you need to come down and support those who live here in the City of Chester. They have some good talent. I see one of our persons right here, they're right there. Can be a show by themselves, but we want to just make sure that everybody comes out and enjoy, enjoy the day, and then the following day will be a worship service at St. Daniel's Church. I have these little fly, these little handouts, if anybody wants one, or two, or three, I'll be willing to let you have it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kotman. Morning.
Um, just giving you heads up, June seventh, we, Team Strive, in a, within, with the community, we'll be doing our Ball Against Violence down Seventh Street Basketball Court. I'm just asking again for everyone to come out. This is our initiative to give back for our third year, to give, um, the youth an opportunity to do different things within the community. We will also, at 1:30, hopefully y'all could be out there by that time. I know the, um, the peace march is the same day. But if y'all could come out there, the police, it will be a three-on-three with the police and the fire company at 1:30. So, that's a great event for the community to see that they, the police and the fire company will be doing activities together, so the city could see, what many youth could see, that we could all come together. Um, also, what I'm asking for is, being out here in the community, we see a lot of the violence and the youth is out here. With the partnership with, um, General Water Rice and Team Strive, we've been, um, giving jobs out for the last couple of years to ta, to the youth at age thirteen years old. We gotta continue to find jobs for these youth at a younger age, because they don't have nothing else to do during this, during the summer, or during the school year. We gotta find other things that's out here to give to the youth. With that being said, we as a community, and as council, and as mayor, the community holds y'all higher, to a higher standard, in a, within the, on the city. When we, when, as y'all go on Facebook, the youth sees that the, the conflict, we know that y'all are passionate with the city, but you cannot continue to go on Facebook having, with y'all feelings on y'all shoulders, and coming to, and putting things out there that is, that becomes a conflict. Now everyone is, because y'all are, are a popular person, or a, or anything else, people hold y'all to a higher standard, that you had to put out there the right things, saying that, look, we want to find different things, different solutions, and not saying, well, we need to do A, B, and C. We need to find other things, other solutions, and putting the right things out there, so the community could be on the same path, and not be in an uproar at all times. Thank you.
I really hope, hope the business community heard him. He hires, he has a, he has several businesses, but he hires young people throughout the summer. Uh, you know, the city government can't hire thirteen-year-olds, we don't have any opportunities like that. But, there's a lot of businesses that could. I think I got my first job when I was thirteen at McLaughlin's Market on Ninth and Pendle, stacking sodas. So, it's, you know, when you have local business, local businesses owned by local people, chances are, you, local youth will be more likely to get hired. I was responding to a lot of Chester high schoolers who wrote letters to me with a project they were doing on Black Wall Street, and just about all of the students said, "Mayor, you need to turn Chester into a Black Wall Street." Well, you know, Black Wall Street was built with the city with no land, black man bought the land, and invited all his business friends to come and take residence on that land, and that's how those businesses got started. We gotta get back to owning businesses, y'all. And I, I guess that's my only message.
I have a response to Mr. Kotman. Thank you for continuing to give back to the city with your programs. We really do appreciate that. But Chester Education Foundation, Ms. Green has a lot of opportunities there for our youth as well, and they hire teenagers, I believe, up to the age of sixteen, seventeen years old. And I'm a product of, when they had the STEP program, they gave me my first job and education while I was working, and they're continuing to go some thirty years later now. So, I do know about that, um, program. And they also have a Resource Center there, for you all that may not know. You can go into the Resource Center and get a, a wealth of information there, uh, ranging from hea- healthcare to jobs, uh, whatever you're looking for is there. Just take a walk down the street, go up to the, floor is dead on, I think it's the seventh. And, um, I'm sure they'll welcome anyone there who'd like to have that information, and that's all I have to say about that.
I'm glad you mentioned her, because she never gets enough, uh, participants in a program. So, if you have young people, teenagers in particular in the summertime, who, uh, are looking for work, they have to go through their job training first, but she is always banging the door for more participants. And they get jobs. There, there are companies waiting to hire her people.
Absolutely.
And she still doesn't get the numbers that she has the capacity to, to help.
I want to make a small comment. Also, um, in regards to what Mr. Kotman said, and being in the schools, um, it's important for, um, our community to actually start reaching out to some of our youth, and find out what they're interested in doing, because a lot of our youth are trying to do something positive with themselves, they just don't know what olive branch, olive branch, I guess, to reach out to. So I have a young man, he's only in the seventh grade right now, and he's interested in having a mobile detailing business. He likes washing cars, he likes cleaning up, um, you know, vehicles and everything like that, and he just doesn't know how to go about that. He's...
I have...
There you go.
...mobile.
There we go.
Yes, we're, we're here.
I'm gonna give him, I'm gonna give him your personal number, but there we go. I hear, you know, individuals, you know, we have trash in our community. I have ten, maybe eleven, between freshmen and eleventh graders, who are interested in doing, um, a cleaning service. They want to have a cleaning business, they interested in getting weed whackers, and trash cans, and gloves, and they'll come and offer to clean your property, ten, fifteen dollars. These are young people who are trying to make a few dollars to support themselves, and they're trying to be more independent. "Oh, Mr. Davis, I don't want to ask my mom and dad for shoes, and socks, and everything like that, I want to go to the mall and buy it myself." They're trying to be independent, they just need help. So, if a group of young people comes and knock on your door, don't be intimidated, or don't be frustrated, or anything like that, be willing to communicate to them. You know, everyone doesn't know how to ask for help, so sometimes you have to be willing to just give help. Um, and that's something that I realize that's not really happening in our community. Uh, we have a lot of young people out here that want to do a lot of positive with their life. They want to change, they want to see, they, they see the same thing that we all see. They want to make money, they want to live in a nice home, but they don't know how to go about it. And it's up to us, as the older generation, to encourage them and to, you know, pour into them. You know, if you're, if you're a millionaire in our community, there's no way that, there's not a thousand kids that you can't touch right now. There's a thousand kids in Chester that I know want to be positive. If you're a business owner and you have space in your building, offer it up to a child. You never know, that ten, fifteen square foot, you know, that young lady might be able to learn how to do hair, or whatever the case may be, but you can't say you're willing to help, and you're not all, willing to offer your resources to a degree. You know, everybody wants something, um, in return for something else. Well, if I'm fourteen years old and I'm trying to get a job, I don't have much to offer, other than my time. And as someone who has a business, or a building, or whatever the case may be, if you're not willing to give me a resource or olive branch to help me, then you're really part of the problem, because you're standing in the way of someone else's progress. And that's something that I'm encouraging a lot of our residents to do. I know we have a lot of business owners here. We have a lot of people who own a lot of property, and are, a lot of real estate in our community, and are doing absolutely nothing with it. So, you're also part of the problem when they say, "Kids have nothing to do." Well, what are you doing with the resources that you have to help these kids get to what they need to get? So, it's, it's a revolving circle, and I'm encouraging everybody to look at the bigger picture. Can't say you want change, you're not willing to, you know, extend the olive branch to really do what's necessary to get the change that you want to see.
Well, you know what I just heard? You know, one of the powers that we have as mayor and council is to convene, just like we've convened the Safe Summer Summit, we should convene a Youth Employment Summit. We will get the business people in the room, we'll get the youth in the room, and see how we can make that connection. So let's, uh, want to do that, councilman?
I would love to.
All right, let's, let's work on that.
Awesome.
Catherine S. Flag, Justice.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council members.
Good morning.
Everyone here. Um, Mayor, I think it's a great idea that you have ministers, pastors for the City of Chester to come to open up our council meeting, and, and prayer, pray for this city. I, I know that God answers prayer. God is also a God of order, and right now, I think our police department is out of order, in that we don't have a Chief of Police in place. And I was wondering if there's anything, and we have somebody in line to move up to that position, and I was wondering if any plans was in place to do that, and how.
Uh, we have a interim commissioner. The position of chief, Chief of Police, commissioner are used interchangeably, although there could be one of each. There are no recruiting efforts going on right now, so what we have is an interim commissioner is going to stand for, for now.
So, that's it?
Our interim commissioner will stand for now. She is serving as our commissioner. There are no recruiting efforts going on, there's no search going on. For now, we're, we're holding pat with what we have.
So it's not proper, when that position is vacant, that they, that person, interim person moves up automatically, or you have to promote them to that position? How does that work? If it's open, if it's an open position, and there's somebody in line to be, and moved up to that position?
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
In the command staff, no, it's not like the union-covered collective bargaining agreement, where there's clear progressions. Once you start wearing those, uh, once, once you get to major, chief, commissioner, they're appointed. Particularly the commissioner.
Who appoints them? By you?
Yes.
Is there a reason why they haven't been appointed, their chief?
Yeah, 'cause we haven't searched for one.
You have what?
Search!
You have to have a search?
I would have to.
So it's not automatic that a person that's in line, next in line moves up?
There is no line. That's what I'm trying to tell you. There is no line when you get to that position.
So you, and you don't feel like there's a person that's ready for that position? You have to search for one?
We will be searching for one when we get to that point.
Because you don't feel like there's a person in place for that position?
There's no one in place. We have someone serving as commissioner right now.
Qualified, I'll say qualified for that position.
They were qualified to be named by myself as the acting commissioner, and as serving. If there was a big rush to change, I would make a big rush to change. They are serving in the position now. They are getting paid as a commissioner now. I, I'm, I'm not understanding your point. We have a commissioner in place.
I think there's order in things, and when things are out of order, if something's out of order, there you, there's an opening where things will come and happen.
Right now, there's an opening as major, yes.
Okay. I, I just, I have a concern about that, about somebody being placed in that position, if they're qualified and in line for that position. I don't understand the search, if there's somebody that's qualified for that position.
If the person you're speaking of is Commissioner Katrina Blackwell, she's in that position right now.
As, that's her title?
That's her title. She's the commissioner. She's serving as commissioner, yes.
Okay, well, I never, you didn't sit, present that information for, to the, um, at the council meeting, that that's where she was. Or, or maybe I'm not understanding you when you say commissioner. Is there a difference between Chief of Police and Commissioner? Because, we lost our Chief of Police, as, everybody knows that.
When I came aboard, there was a, a, a major.
So that, that, that position is open? That position is left open now, because he's gone?
We can create a chief anytime we want. At some point before I got here, they got rid of the chief, for whatever reason they wanted to.
But while you were here, our, our Chief of Police is gone. While you were mayor...
When I was here, there was a commissioner and a major. That's our command staff.
Okay. I, I don't understand why you're hesitant about putting that person...
I am not hesitant on anything. I created a commissioner, the, the interim commissioner is serving as the commissioner. There was no hesitation. It was done three days after the, two days, a day, after the other one, uh, got in a little trouble and, and retired.
I still, I think there's a difference between what you're saying and what I'm asking.
All right, let's talk offline then.
She wants to know why she hasn't been appointed, if you can be, if you're the one to...
Elizabeth Williams.
Correct. Am, huh? No, I'll get that. Why she hasn't been appointed?
Morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Good morning. Um, Dylan Wig crozier hospital. I went to my doctor's, where I would, I thought was my doctor's office, and it's not a office anymore. I have not received anything from them stating what was, what I'm supposed to do, or where I'm supposed to go, and I'm quite sure if, uh, uh, we don't know. We're, we're, we're out there left, out in left field and don't know what to do and where to go. I went to CVS, and one of the ni- nice ladies in there was, I was talking to her about the hospital, and about what happened. One of the nice ladies that worked there told me to go to the CVS in Folsom. So, when I went to the CVS in Folsom, I got this list. This is a list of doctors, and it's not in our neighborhood. This is a list of doctors that we can look up about going to, if you need a doctor. I bought some here today, but I would appreciate it very much, since you got all this new stuff going on over here, if you could put this on our station, so that people can see, in our neighborhood, where they can go. And most of the places is out of town. And those, those other, um, quick places, when you go out there, please take some money, 'cause they do not take our medical card. They're not taking our insurance cards. Okay, so when you go to one of those quick places, you gonna have to pay. Now, I would like to give you some information to the mayor and cit, in the City of Chester. On two twenty-eight eighteen, around, uh, between eleven and twelve, I was in a meeting with the Act Forty-seven group. Not, not this new group, but the group that we had here when we first came. At that meeting, someone promised the City of Chester sixty million dollars. And that sixty million dollars is still sitting on the table.
Thank you. On the city website, there's a flyer dated, well, it's not dated, but the title of the flyer is "Navigating Our Healthcare System: Supporting One Another During Changing Times." On April twenty-fourth, from six to eight, there was, uh, Delaware County Health Department hosted a panel discussion to help educate county residents on ways to navigate the healthcare system during these uncertain times. Since then, I know there's been others, and I know our Commissioner of Health is not here today.
She was here.
She was here? Oh. But she put together a document of resources. That's not on our, is that on our website?
Yeah, we're building out the, uh, health page. So, one of the things that Commissioner Motley presented at the, I think the previous council meeting, was the Together for Je, Together for Chester webpage. So that's kind of a separate thing that we'll link to from, from our health department page. Uh, but that has a lot of resources. Dr. Motley also has, uh, put together some other resources that we're currently, uh, adding to her page. So, check back there, and we'll have more and more resources.
All right. Well, that was our last public comment. Can you put the Together for Chester website up, so people can see what it looks like? Some mayor, a gentleman raising his hand. We're, we're getting out of here. So there you go. Togetherforchester.org. I would encourage anybody, like myself, who lost my primary care physician because of the Crozier closing, to go in there and find out what resources are available for us. I would also... What else was I, what else was I going to say, councilman? I forgot what I was going to say. But that, oh, your medical records. Uh, make sure, if you were in the Crozier system, to request your medical records, uh, as the county health commissioner said, as soon as possible. I will tell you, I did it as soon as she said as soon as possible. That was probably two weeks ago, and I still haven't received them. I've heard other people complain that they've requested their records and they haven't received them. I did have to go to a doctor at Jefferson last week, and they're, I'm up in Philadelphia Center City, they're upset with Crozier, and the way that they're handling medical records as well. But, uh, the doctor did say that if you're on record, having requested your records, they have to give it to you. The sense that I got is, the request period, or the period for requesting your records may, may end. So, as soon as possible, if you have records, request them. Can I get a motion to, uh, adjourn?
Yeah, I'd like that, please.
So move. Can I get a second?
Second.
Eating adjourned.
Oh, why you done the meeting so quick? I had to went to the bathroom. Hey, 'cause I want to ask you something. I see something happen yesterday I ain't never seen before in my life.
Let me ask you one question.